Appreciative of the people who got here. Let's get it moving. So I am going to call a meeting to order of the liaison meeting for the town council, Board of Ed, RTM, and City Council. And it's 5:33. And our first order of business is to review the meeting minutes. And I mean, I guess we can vote to approve. So I'll make a motion to approve the July 1st, 2020 meeting minutes of the liaison committee. Can I have a second?
Second. Second.
I got it. Thank you. Any other discussion about that? All right, then we're going to move on. I know that probably is on most people's minds. Oh, this is like a Board of Ed meeting. I know that we, what's on most people's minds is probably what's happening with the schools. And specifically for the RTM and for the town council, I think my sense is, is that the Board of Ed, we are sort of enmeshed and embedded in all of those plans, specifically Susan and Dr. Grenier. So I don't know if we want to kind of do it backwards and just kind of hear what's going on from the other bodies so that it will allow. I'm actually going to let between Susan and Dr. Grenier to kind of go through what the opening, what are the different opening plans? The caveat with that is that the Board does not vote until Monday about where, you know, how school is going to reopen and what one of those avenues it's going to be, which is full in, virtual, or a hybrid model. But I would have Dr. Grenier kind of give us a kind of a synopsis, and Susan, a synopsis of our three and a half hour or three, almost three hour meeting that we had on Monday, where we went very detailed into it. And then I also want to have us spend some time that regardless of sort of where, how we open, the goal for the school is to eventually, with as much safety as to get all of our kids into school. But there's a lot of cost to that. And I asked Dr. Grenier to kind of work with our business manager so that the RTM and the town council understand that we have gotten a whole bunch of money from the CARES Act. But that it has not, it's not going to cover all the costs that we need to have in order to keep our students and staff safe. And so I just wanted to make sure that we have that dialogue. And that the other thing that I'm going to ask for Patrice and for, if Kathy, if you could please send this on to the RTM, is I know lots of members want to hear about what's going on in the school system. And I just ask, you know, and I guess this is me being protective, is that Susan and Mike are working with their staff full guns to try to get this to happen. And that I ask that this really, this liaison committee become the place where you get the information that you can then give to the members and that be kind enough to not request for the Assistant Superintendent or Superintendent or Board Member to kind of come in to kind of talk this over. And if you could just give us a chance to kind of get in and get our feet wet, I think that that would be most, I would be most appreciative of that. And it's not that I don't want to share this information because I do, but that we have to like think about what that means for the staff in terms of having another night meeting. And so I just am going to respectfully ask that, this is not coming from the Board, this is actually just coming from me, but I know that the Board would most likely share my sentiments around that. So with that said, Patrice, how about if you talk a little bit about what's happening on the town council end?
Okay, thank you. We have a long-term recovery meeting, actually at 6:30 tonight, so I may have to bow out a few minutes early if you guys are still going. We postponed, I postponed the meeting last night because of the weather and the storms. And we would have had to have had staff on the road during the height of the storm, and I was a little leery about doing that. So we will have our council meeting on Tuesday at 6:30, and as soon as it concludes, we will have our COW meeting immediately following that. And the main things that are coming up for that meeting are the no-ang school property, acceptance of open space on Sandy Hollow Road, and an affordable housing plan grant. So those are the three items we will be voting on. The other thing that's kind of looming out there, we're going to be talking about infrastructure a bit, so that'll be over the next, probably month or so. We'll be trying to have some discussions about roads, complete streets, and how we're going to fund those things. We also have some bridges, as you know, that are in need of replacement, so we will be looking at trying to find money for all of these things and trying to make a decision as to whether we're going to fund these infrastructure improvements year by year in the capital improvement projects, capital improvement plan, excuse me, or whether we're going to try to do a bond. And that's a big issue that the council is going to have to decide which way we want to go with that. So briefly, I think that's about it. We're moving ahead with helping out the businesses in town with PPEs and getting some money for masks for customers that come in without masks and trying to just supply the businesses so that we can try to keep people healthy here in town. So I think that's about it. I will yield back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you. Kathy, do you feel that you could kind of talk about what's happening on the RTM level?
Yeah. Sorry.
I love your backdrop.
Oh, thank you. Yes, our last meeting was held on July 8th, and we had one item on the agenda, and that was a referral to add a student as ex-officio to the RTM. And there was a lengthy debate about that, whether to have two, four, and what high school they're coming from and how to choose them. So we probably will be talking about that next meeting as well.
I hope that that kind of goes through, even if they only need to come for like a little bit part of it or what have you, because speaking from the Board, having the students be as active, in the past couple of years, they've been so incredibly active in our meetings, specifically our committee, the whole meeting. It is just really, it is absolutely delightful. Questions?
What do you mean, which high school?
Well, although it didn't say Fitch High School specifically in what they had written up, what the committee wrote up, there was some concern that that it would be implied that it would only be from Fitch, and there's many other high schools, and there's students that live in Groton but go to other high schools. So I think it's going to be a Groton resident, and they're just working out the details on how those students will be chosen.
I can support that. All the children of Groton should get the chance.
Absolutely.
Does anyone have any questions for like the RTM or for Patrice? And Mark, Reggie has not come in or anyone from the City Council, is that correct?
I have not seen them.
Okay, super. All right, so as I sort of assumed, people are probably like us, pretty anxious about what's happening in terms of the school district. I also just want to just remind people that you can remind your membership is that our meeting of Monday, where we had a lengthy conversation and a full discussion about the reopening plan, like the whole document, and each author of each document was present to present what we did is on our website with all the different links. And so, and quite frankly, it's an incredibly impressive, it's a pretty impressive piece of work, and a lot of hard work has gone into that. And that I also believe, and this was actually Susan Austin's idea, is that there's a lot of people who were putting chats in, and we're going to gather those chats, those questions, and we're going to use that as a question and answer piece, and that's also going to be on our district webpage. So kind of like those kind of regular sort of asked questions, frequently asked questions, that's going to be as well on the website. I think that it just takes some time to get to all those. And we also received many letters, and I think that any of those, those will also try to get those answered as a Q and A as well. So I just wanted to let you know about that. But I'm going to now pass that over to both Susan and to Mike, and kind of you could kind of talk about what our reopening plan looks like, reminding people that we have not voted on what that plan is going to be.
Sure. I'll start, and maybe Susan, you could jump in and do some of the academic aspects, but I'm going to share my screen for a minute here. And I'm going to try to have you see. If I can make this bigger, I'd be happy. Okay, so then, Newark Council. Okay, so if you go to grotonschools.org, the first thing that you will see is is a link, here's what I was looking for, is a link to the Groton Public Schools reopening plan. And the way it's structured, we have a little bit of an introduction here, which basically says that we have, we have three, because the Governor and the State Department of Education asked us to make sure that we have three plans. We have a plan for all the students to come back, full in, face-to-face. We have a plan that if the health measures indicate that we would go full remote, like last spring. And we have a plan for the hybrid, and I'm just going to roll through here a little bit and talk about this hybrid model that I know a lot of school districts have already adopted. I think it will be a dominant one, perhaps in the state. But the basic thought here is that to have a hybrid model, we would separate each class, basically, into two groups, two cohort groups. And Cohort A, and perhaps they would be separated by alphabet, but we would be flexible about that. Cohort A would come in on Mondays and Tuesdays. By having only half of the students in a cohort, we would, of course, be able to maximize social distancing in the classroom and on the buses. Wednesdays, schools would be closed, and the students would participate in distance learning. The schools would have a deep cleaning on Wednesdays. And then, back to Monday and Tuesday, the other 50%, that is to say, the children in Cohort B would have distance learning, would do remote learning on those days. Then on Thursday and Friday, Cohort A would have distance learning, and Cohort B would come in in person. And there are some exceptions to this. For example, in some of our high needs classes, our special education self-contained program, there are actually very few students in the class anyway. So those children would come in four days a week so that we would still be able to maximize social distancing. We're also going to make sure, of course, that families, if the children perhaps have different last names, we will coordinate it so that all the children in one family would come to school in just two days. And then if you, I'm going to ask Susan to talk a little bit, and Sam, if you're prepared, you could perhaps briefly address some of the facilities, steps that were taken to try to promote health and safety, and a little bit about the transportation. And then when you're finished, I have some financial implications that I'd be happy to share with you.
Mike, can you go back down to the hybrid method? I just wanted to clarify a point.
Sure.
So in a hybrid plan or a blended learning plan, they're often called, you're actually blending face-to-face opportunities for the children with distance learning. And on Wednesday, teachers are going to be able to work all day, and they're going to be able to have office hours, Zoom calls. So imagine if you have an elementary student, and they happen to have Monday and Tuesday in school while the Thursday, Friday group is doing their distance learning according to what the teacher has mapped out for them to accomplish and the instructional tools that are there. Wednesday, they're all home, but the teacher can do a morning meeting with them, she can do a read aloud, she can pull them together and do some, you know, some special bonding kinds of opportunities so they get to meet the class. And then Thursday and Friday will be the other cohort, and the first cohort will be doing their work. I have to say, we learned a lot of lessons, and we had a lot of communication with students, staff, and parents. And they told us, and we were able to really find out things that we really needed to grow with. You know, our motto was start slow and grow, and we did make some tremendous growth. But I would say we needed to grow some more. And one of those things that we talked about was asynchronous learning blended with synchronized learning. Asynchronous is a lot of what we saw. So if you were on a Google Classroom, your child was assigned work, there might be some video clips, there might be some instructional tools, there might even be a padlet for them to fill in, there might be opportunities for kids to actually work together. But it was mostly the work was given out in instruction in a remote way. As teachers got more comfortable with Zoom, many of them started to check in with kids in small groups and whole classrooms, and that's called synchronized learning. And now we're kicking it up even another notch. So synchronous learning, the best of the best, is when our kids are face-to-face and with us. But our thinking is that we really want to still continue to start slow and grow because we want this to be sustainable, this model. So we figure at the end of the month, we'll be able to go back to the Board and tell them how it's going, and hopefully we haven't closed down because we've done this so safely. And I think safety has been the number one concern for both Mike and I, and our staff, and this Board. Like, how can we do this, sustain this work, have our kids not be interrupted? And our teachers kept saying, if only I could have had my kids and could have shown them how to use the Google Classroom and to show them what's expected with distance learning. So a lot of what the teachers have planned has been around, you know, getting them back the first six to eight weeks, and what would that look like? You know, developing reading behaviors and that kind of thing, either at home or at school. So just, I wanted to preface this academic piece because there's been a lot of volunteers, we had over 300 volunteers create this plan, and then Erica and I put it together. So that was the hardship, taking all these ideas and putting it together in one comprehensive plan. And, you know, I just feel like the teachers really thought long and hard. And then we had teachers also, pre-K through 12, designing compacted curriculum for the start of the year, thinking about their kids, their whole classroom. If there's 25 kids, I have 10 in Cohort, you know, AB, or 10 in Cohort A, and 10 in Cohort B, and five who decide to do remote all the way. Those 25 kids are mine. So I just wanted to say that out loud so that you could kind of understand that a little better. So we can go to academics, Mike, and I can show them the three. So there's three topics designed by the state under academics. One is special education, the other is English learners, and the following is remote blended learning. And in both, the special education and the English language learner, the main point is that our students, no matter what their abilities are, their disabilities, their languages, we have to provide free and appropriate education. We believe we have to provide high-quality instruction for all our students, and we need to meet their needs. And in a special education student, they have what is called an IEP that we follow, and that's an individual education program. For our EL students, we have a loss test, and we have certified teachers that are EL teachers that provide instruction. So no matter where they are in the continuum of understanding the new language, we have to provide for them, communicate with their teachers. And the same is true with our resource teachers. But under each link, you can kind of open it up, and I'll let you just open one up, like maybe the communication piece. So you can see there's many bullets under each that describe specifically, what does that look like in Groton? What are we expecting in Groton? So, you know, I just want to make you aware of that. That's what took us three hours the other night because we really wanted to go through all of that. So I'll move right down to remote blended learning. And I did describe it a little bit for you while we had the model up. So, and they said, you know, it would happen upon canceling classes. We're thinking, as many superintendents across this area and across the state are thinking, we would like to start with blended learning for sustainability, for safety. And then the hope is by October, mid-October even, let's see how things are going, and if we're able to bring all of our kids back, we will. We've heard stories in Georgia and other places around the country that have already started school and they had to close the second day because there was a case of COVID. So we don't want to have to do that. And if we have to go remote, we will, but we'll have plans for that as well. So I had said the compacting curriculum and teams of teachers being ready, knowing what assessments will be used, they even have links and lesson plans, and we're going to be able to have four extra PD days at the start of the year. Children will be coming back after Labor Day. And that's going to afford, I have like a handful of PD. So the first PD will be health and safety, first and foremost. What are the school procedures? What do I have to consider? What is the schedule going to look like and all that? Then there's curriculum and instruction, and what do those first six weeks look? And particularly, what does that first week look like for a first grader? And so colleagues have worked on this, and they're going to be sharing that. And then, you know, thinking too about remote learning. Our teachers, you know, they kind of took the NESTI plunge on remote learning, and there's still so much more they want to learn. And so we've kind of surveyed them, and we've got some great ideas for a virtual remote learning day. But then other things too coming up. And the fifth one is really about social emotional learning. Kids have, we have not had them since March. And the most important thing is to check in and see how they're doing and building those relationships, reading read-alouds that would help them feel part of the community. And then another subgroup of our social emotional learning group is something called DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so thinking about what's happening around the world, right here in Groton, and how those three factors, diversity, equity, and inclusion are absolutely imperative for every person, and especially for every student in Groton Public Schools. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. You can open it up. Mark had done a videotape of Mike and I, and I think Sam's doing one, of just a two to five-minute brief that will be adding to this site so that if there are RTM members who want to hear us talk about it or want more information, they can certainly, you know, we'll direct them to this. And if there are questions and answers they may have, they can certainly email us, and we can add that to the, you know, or town council members or city council members. So we will definitely send out an email and, you know, link it to this page so that they can get more information.
Perfect, thanks. Sam, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
So maybe you could just kind of give us the overview for this?
Yeah. The Facilities Operations Plan, the Cleaning Sanitation Plan is all developed through the guidance of the CDC, the State Health Department, and of course, Legislative Health District. So that's how we put this all together. I think the highlight is, or the most important part of it is, that we are planning to bring in additional staff during the day to actually do continuous cleaning of the lavatories and high-touch zones throughout the school buildings. That's number one. The other thing that I did point out the other night is that I gave out some definitions. I think that's also critical to understand the differences between just cleaning, which is essentially just wiping something down, doesn't necessarily kill germs and viruses. Sanitation is, will be the next level, and that is using a chemical, spraying it and wiping it down. That kills some germs and viruses, but the best way of doing it is disinfecting. And in order to disinfect, you need to use an EPA-registered chemical and spray it on or wipe it on wet, leave it there for 10 minutes, let it dwell for 20, 10 minutes, and then wipe it down so that you're actually doing cleaning and disinfecting at the same time. So that's the most effective way of taking care of this COVID-19 and eliminating the possibility of transmitting that throughout the buildings.
Do you want to hop down to transportation?
Yeah, transportation. We've been working with STA, they've been great since the beginning of this. So STA is already working off the CDC guidelines for transportation for school buses, and they are planning on sanitizing between runs. There's about, it takes about three hours to do the runs in the morning for all three schools. And in between runs, they'll actually sanitize the buses, and they will disinfect the buses on a nightly or a daily basis. There are certain rules for the kids when they get on. Number one, they must be wearing a mask. Two, they should face forward. And the third thing is that when they get on the bus, they'll actually, the first kid on the bus will go all the way to the back of the bus. So they will load from the rear of the bus forward so that the kids aren't bypassing each other on the bus. And then, of course, when they're disembarking from the bus, they'll unload from the front of the bus to the rear so that they're not, to keep it as socially distanced as possible. So that's pretty much of it in a nutshell, I think.
Thank you. I'm, as you'll see in the plan, we also have family and student engagement, and there's, you look at the plan there, Seth Danner and Denise Doolittle and their committee did some really terrific work, reaching out to plans for reaching out to families and kids. And of course, the health practices, that is largely worked out with our nursing staff and Legislative Health District. So it'd be hard to go through everything briefly, but Sam and I talk a lot about what I think of as the big five measures. Kids and staff are going to be wearing masks, we are going to be encouraging frequent hand washing, we're going to maximize social distancing, we're going to, Sam didn't mention it, but we are recommissioning all of our ventilation systems in each of the schools so that they are operating as designed. Going to ensure that. And then lastly, as he said, we're having extra custodial force come in and do continuous cleaning throughout the day, especially for lavatories and high-touch services. But I want to, I want to share one other document, and then we can go back to this. The other document I wanted to share is a financial document, and hopefully I can get this to be big enough so that we could all see it. We have been asked to okay. As Kim said, about six weeks ago, the CARES Act was passed and signed by the President, and it sent to the state of Connecticut $111 million. And the education portion of that was divvied up to the various school districts, and Groton received $686,000. We've actually put a budget together for this. Some of it was anticipated and some of it was already spent. So let me just walk my way through the budget. And so what we said was, we were going to fund a social worker, and we were going to fund some curriculum, curriculum work in the summer. uh, curriculum work in the summer. Uh, the social worker has been identified and the curriculum work has actually already been done. The, 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 the next portion is the lion's share of what we may need. But we don't know because we don't know how, uh, how the virus is going to proceed. But for planning purposes, we're saying that we would, we would hire for about, uh, for about a hundred, uh, 140, uh, 140 days. Uh, we would, we would, uh, we would hire a 40, 40 substitute. It's a hundred dollars a day, 40. So, so for the, for the first 40 days, if we hired 40 substitute teachers, it would cost $160,000. Uh, if, if the schools needed subs beyond the first 40 days, uh, we would have to hire substitute teachers and they would have to be certified, which is another challenge. I'm not sure we're going to get these certified people. But we would need them for say another 140 days. Assuming this is a kind of a worst-case scenario that we had to be out for the whole year. And that would, that would require about 1.5 million dollars. Uh, we know that there are paraprofessionals. In fact, we know, uh, because Lori, Lori Lapine and her staff are actually conducting interviews. Hold on one sec, uh, Reggie, I'm sorry, Reggie Stanford. Hi Reggie, uh, are you able to get on the meeting? I'm doing fine. Okay. Okay. I can't, if you stay on, if you stay on the phone, I'll just leave you on speaker. Okay, great. All right. So Reggie, Reggie Stanford is with us.
I'll also have a recording of it too.
Yeah, we'll have a recording of it too. So, uh, hopefully you can, you can hear all this. So anyway, I was saying that, uh, we would, we would have to, uh, well, we don't have to, but, uh, we're concerned that there are about, I started to say Lori is interviewing about 70 staff members, some teachers, some paraprofessionals have requested accommodations because they, they have pre-existing conditions or somebody they live with has a pre-existing condition. So w- we, we know that about 90% of the staff in, responded to a survey, they can come back. They're prepared to come back. Uh, but 10%, which is a fair, fair number of people. Uh, so hence the number of, uh, substitute teachers and substitute pairs. And then with, with Sam, uh, Sam worked out that we, we would need approximately 10 additional part-time custodians and that would come to, uh, uh, to about, uh, $118,000. The food service people, w- we are paying the food service people, uh, but we're not getting reimbursed, uh, for the meals, uh, the way it typically, uh, goes. So Ken, uh, looked at the invoice today and to pay for our food service staff, it came to, uh, uh, about $113,000 al- already. So, uh, in terms of the salaries and anticipated benefits, we're, we're at about $2.3 million. We also know that we are, we, we have purchased some death shields, which is kind of a plexiglass barrier, uh, for each of our elementary children and all of our special education children. We have ordered some additional personal protective equipment. We ordered hundreds of thousands of dollars in the spring, but we, this is additional. Uh, we've got some additional, uh, costs for, uh, at-home supplies, toolkits that Susan and the principals are coordinating. Uh, we, we have some secondary, uh, there are some, uh, secondary school costs, uh, per school for those, those, uh, supplies. So it, it, it all comes, w- we anticipate, it all comes to about one, 2.5 million dollars. W- we have already received 686,000. About 20,000 of that will be allocated to Sacred Heart. So we're left with about 666,000, which leaves us 1.8 million dollars short of, of our anticipated expenditures. The, the, the way we, we, we hope to address this shortfall, which I, I realize is monumental, is that there is an act right now that the Senate is, is working on, it's called the HEROES Act. And the HEROES Act would, would send to Connecticut not 111 million for education, but 300 million. If, if the act goes through. So we, we anticipate that we would, w- we would receive a- approximately, I'm, 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 this is a really a general ballpark. I think we would get approximately $2 million if, if the, if the HERO Act is, is passed by the Senate and signed by the president. If, if not, and the, the, the pandemic continues, and this is, this is, I wouldn't call this a worst-case scenario, but I would say this is a pretty bad-case scenario. It could get better. In other words, it, we, we, we could go back in full and not need nearly as many substitute teachers. So I'm going to go back up to substitute teachers. Well, that was a, uh, all the substitute between Paris and substitute teachers and so forth, that came to 2.3 million dollars. We would need some of that, but not all of that. If we go all out, that is to say if the pandemic gets worse and we, we, we would not, we would not need the substitute teachers, e- e- except for those, uh, who are covering for, uh, in, uh, a, a, a staff member who's unable to work, which would be relatively limited. So I'm going to say, as I said to, to the board the other night, I think we're in about the 2.5 million dollar area. We already have 666,000 that's already in the bank. So we are facing a potential shortfall. Uh, and, you know, which is why I'm following the, following the Senate deliberations. And I, I, I don't want to be overly optimistic, but I, I, the, the reports the last couple of days have been relatively positive. Th- this would be money, by the way, that would come to municipalities where the municipalities benefit as well as additional money for the school system. So, yeah, if, if this money comes through, then I think Groton, uh, would receive its fair share of it. And we would, uh, we, we would be able to cover these expenses. So I'll, I'll stop there and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'll turn it over to you, Kim.
Would you be willing to, um, stop sharing your screen? Sorry, all of a sudden everyone came back. A little scary. So, um, um, I, I also, I am, I think it's pretty clear from, at least from the board's perspective, that Dr. Grenier and Susan have a, have a preferred plan, um, which is the hybrid model. I mean, I think that that's, I think it's pretty clear. Though people need to, need to understand is that the board has not voted on that. Um, and so we have to, really have to consider, um, what it would look like if we did an all-in, or what, what it would look like if we, um, did, um, this all remote. But my understanding, Mike, whatever path, um, like it's, um, played out, my understanding is, um, we are going to, um, there's going to be a short-term like review, like we're going to be able to have, um, data gathered, um, and to see, and that, my understanding is that, that's also pretty clear with the other districts, um, superintendents in the local area, is that, um, they also have a preferred, um, way, way of entering. Um, and, but that the belief is, is that in the very beginning of October, to have a review about how is it going? What needs to have happened? Do we need to kind of continue or, or, or what have you? So I, I just wanted to make sure that, um, I, I'm not going to, I, I'd be disingenuous to say that we don't know where Dr. Grenier and Susan fall on which, which, um, which model that they, what they support. Um, but I do have to say that we have not, as a board, come together to, to make that pronouncement.
I do have to say though, that our team has planned for all three ways. So they've planned for the big plan. They've planned down to curriculum and priority standards. They've planned down to lesson plans. So they've, they've done it face-to-face. Everybody's together. They've done it distance and then they've done it the hybrid method, which I think is a good way to look at it because Mike even said he'll eat his hat if, if it doesn't happen all three ways in one year. So, you know, and he has a lot of hats. So you, you just don't know, you know? Um, so we have planned for it in all three ways. I think people, parents, um, students, teachers will feel much more comfortable once they know what the plan is and can plan for the plan. Even though we're going to start out kind of a month at a time in review.
Are there questions?
Yes, this is Reggie Stanford. I do apologize that I'm late. But, uh, one, one question is, are the schools going to install or have thermometers to read the temperatures of the students and staff members on a daily basis? Or how would that work?
We, yes, we, we have the thermometers, but it is not, it, it is not recommended that the, every single student's temperature be taken, uh, as they enter the school. That, that does not seem to be a leading indicator. So when we, when we, we made our plan, we, we actually purchased dozens of thermometers. But even in the summer school, Reggie, they, they have not recommended that for the young children.
Okay.
It, it's, yeah, you're welcome.
Kim?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I don't know who you're referring to.
No, please, um, um, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, so first, I just wanted to thank, thank the board and, um, Dr. Grenier and, um, Ms. Austin for all their work on this. And I just needed to clarify, if town councilors or RTM members for that matter, have questions about the plan, what you would like us to do or what you're requesting is that we go to the video of your meeting from last week. First, watch that and consult the plans that are posted on the Groton Public Schools website and look for our answers there, correct?
Right. But if you still have questions, they could certainly be sent in. I don't know what would be the best way to send them in. We have had lots of surveys, but...
I, I would be really concerned that everyone kind of bombards Susan and Mike. And once again, that's me just being really kind of protective over them. Um, and, um, but I, I'm, and, and Patrice, one of the things that I was just asking for was that instead of just asking for Susan and Mike to come quickly and to say, so how is the beginning of the school year going? If people can just be understanding that, um, that there's so many balls in the air that we really need to have a, have a chance to be able to kind of breathe around that. The other information that people probably don't know, and, and Mike, I know that you had a question and, and Lee, I see that you have a question. Um, is, um, we, Dr. Grenier and Susan, um, along with their principals, have been leading focus groups. So they have been having, um, p- parents coming together, um, obviously via Zoom, um, to, um, to, to, uh, to get, to get parents input about what they need in order, um, for the schools to sort of reopen. Um, so that, once again, when the board makes their decision on Monday, we're not only going to have all the information that we had, um, that we had gained from last week's, but we also will have the information gathered from the, the focus group. And I also believe, um, staff were also in a focus, focus, focus group. Is that correct, Susan, or no?
Yes, yes. And we've, and we've done surveys too.
And students, students at high schools.
And students.
So we've been really trying to make sure that we have as much information as possible.
Right. And we'll continue to do that. That's not going to stop. We really want to continue this journey and communicate better and have two-way communications all along. The other thing I was thinking about, Patrice, is I am gathering that list of highly frequently asked questions that we'll be able to post. So people may see that and there may be a way that I could just add something, a survey-like, that if people had additional questions, they would come to me. So let me talk to the tech director and see how we can do that.
Great. Thank you so much. And I just wanted to, um, say thank you again for all of you. And I'm, I'm going to have to cut out because I've got that other meeting. But, um, you're, no one wants to be in your shoes and we appreciate all the work you're doing. It's a very difficult situation. Um, and we appreciate all the energy and time and we know you care about the kids and we know you care about the teachers. So, um, we know, we trust you will do your best for all of us. So thank you so much. And I, I apologize, I have to leave, but I've, I've got this other thing. So good night, everybody. Thank you.
Night.
Did I, Chris, Mike?
Yep.
Like you, no, not you, Mike, uh, Mike Whitney, Mike. And Mike, you just switched on my other side of my screen. So I was like, I was trying to find you.
Yeah, I lost him too. He went from there to there.
Thank you. I just had a quick question for the face-to-face model and the hybrid model. There are going to be some kids, I assume, that have health conditions and can't be back in school. Um, are they going to be zoomed into the classroom where the students are or Google Meet it in? I mean, or is there something preventing that or I don't know what the plans are for that?
Now, we're actually working on that, Mike. We would like to be able to give some opportunities. The problem with zooming all day is that might not work for children or parents. So we're even looking to see if there's a way to record that lesson. So if they're not able to be there for morning meeting or whatever, we'd love to have all of our kids check in at homeroom time together, kind of get oriented to the lesson of the day. And then be able to record some of those lessons so that they, and then post them. So it, whether they're in the classroom, they get the lesson, or whether they're, um, at home, they would get the lesson as well.
That's great because it'll be important for them to feel part of their own class as well.
We're learning how to do this though. I'm reading all about, you know, flipped classrooms and hybrid and all of these plans. So it's kind of exciting for me, you know, to learn some of this.
We're doing the same thing on the university level.
I bet you are.
Mike, Mike, the big, the big thing that we're trying to accomplish here is picture a class of 21 students. We think that seven might come in in cohort A, seven might come in in cohort B. But the seven children who are remote, we're going to get them involved as often as possible, uh, live, uh, recorded, uh, we're, we're, we're trying to, the, the big thing on Monday that I, Susan and I are kind of taking a deep breath here. Because once, it, once we have our model, then we're going to start having a laser focus on how do you actually pull this off? It's, it's, it's not, it's not as easy as you know. It's not as easy as it looks. And we, and we, we need the technology to do this and we need the personnel to do this. But the, the answer to your question is yes, we are going to try to get the remote children, uh, and any, any, anyone who, there may be, there may even be some teachers who are remote. Uh, and, and we-
And they're zooming in to the class.
They're going to be zooming into a class that will probably have a substitute in, in the front of the room. But the teacher will zoom in to a Promethean board. So we're, you know, we just made that up. We made that up as we go along, of course, but that's what we're trying to do.
Well, we want those highly qualified certified teachers. And at the high school, if you have a chemistry or physics teacher that for whatever reason can't be there, but you can find a, a substitute who can carry off some of the work, you could actually zoom that certified teacher in to be part of that class. And so we're just really trying to think out of the box.
Lee? Uh, yeah, Kim, if you could please let everybody know that they can go to, it's called GrotonSchools, I think, dot org, not Groton Public Schools, but it's GrotonSchools.org?
That's it.
And it's, it's a marvel and it adds, uh, answers a lot of questions.
Lee, thank you very much. And I always get that wrong. So I, I appreciate that. Mike, I didn't mean to, um, cut you off. Did you have more questions? Okay, all right, all right.
I would just add one thing. When, when Mark Russell and I looked at the, the length of the video was two hours and 53 minutes. It, we, we realized it, it might be cruel and unusual punishment to subject the public to that long. So what Mark did is he taped me and I took my introduction and I got it to two minutes and seven seconds. And then Susan did her piece today and Sam's going to do his tomorrow. So there will be, when you go to the webpage, I think there'll be a picture, right, Mark? So if you, if you go to facilities, you click facilities, Sam will come up and Sam will do, uh, do a, a kind of an overview. But, but like maybe, maybe two or three minutes worth. So I think, I think when you get to the end of the eight sections, probably you could get through that in about 20 minutes. And if people are like super interested, then God bless them. They can watch the whole two hours and 53 minutes.
And there's a lot of information under each of those bullets too. It's really a lot of detail.
Um, the other thing too, um, that the board is also doing because, um, trying to figure out how to reopen schools in a pandemic is just not enough. Um, is, is that as most people know, Dr. Grenier is, um, will be retiring, um, and in October. And so the doc, uh, so last week, um, are the board, um, which has already formed as the search committee- And so the, so last week, our, the board, which has already formed as the search committee, has hired a consultant to kind of lead us through the search process. And that, in case people, I know there's a lot of people who are asking, is that in, in consult with the consultant that we have hired recommends that the board is actually the search committee, but she will be running lots of focus groups because, to get information from our stakeholders. And so we plan to make sure that the RTM and the town council and the city council are going to be part of the stakeholder meetings as long, as long as parents as well. So we want to make sure that people have their voice and have their, and have participation in the process. But we are, we are going to remain, the board is going to be remained as the search committee as well. And that's, once again, under advice from the consultant. So we're doing that because that's kind of fun. And then the other thing is, is that West Side Middle School and Cutler Middle School have, have, are no longer functioning buildings. In fact, we voted two weeks ago to bring them back to the town so that they can be destroyed. And where they're already excavating and doing some groundwork for the elementary schools, the board is very much involved in the redistricting, not redistricting, is, is sort of where are the different neighborhoods going? And we just need to kind of get through this kind of current hump. And we will be then doing some more town halls and stuff like that to get people's input about what, what, what neighborhoods go to there. But we, but Mike, and, excuse me, Dr. Grineer and Ms. Austin has been working with a consulting firm, Mike Zubba, who has done a lot of our work before and has also worked for the town in helps on how to, how do we, how do we rethink who goes to what school, and also magnet schools. And actually, that's another thing that Susan is involved with, because once again, reopening school and making that document is not enough. Let's make sure that we get naming of the elementary schools going and also magnet schools. Think, thinking about magnet themes so that all of our elementary schools would have an element, would have a magnet theme to it, which also helps with, we can keep some neighborhood feel to it, but it also allows us to make sure that we're meeting the requirements of racial balance, since that has been a historic issue in the town of, town of Groton. And also because, once again, we, we're not doing enough. The Groton Middle School is going to be opened. And so, right. And we were fortunate enough, there's a few members of the board who got to come and actually do a tour of, of the Groton Middle School. And let me tell you something, it is a beautiful building for the community, just amazingly beautiful. And lots of great space that I believe that the community will be able to use when we're not in school in terms of some rec programs and et cetera. But it's just, it is, it is a marvel. It is, it is, it is just amazing. So that's, that's the other pieces that the board is also involved in. Any other questions? Kathy?
Yes, thank you. I was very fortunate to be able to go on the tour of the Groton Middle School, it is awesome.
Good, good.
The dining room is phenomenal, the lighting is, I couldn't get over it, the school is just phenomenal.
It really is state-of-the-art, isn't it? I'm so proud. And wait till the kids get their schedules, it's coming soon. But I think they're going to be so tickled that they, you know, they can do the deep dive or the dabble, and they've got a lot of opportunity.
Oh, it's unbelievable. I wish they had had that when I was going to school back in the dinosaur ages, as my grandchildren sigh. I do have one request, if it's at all possible, and you don't have to answer me tonight. I was wondering if we could have another tour when it's all furnished, furnished just before school starts so we can have that visual of what it really looks like.
You know, I was going to say, you, you know Kathy, they like to keep it to a relatively small number of people, like, like eight or so. I was going to say, Mike, one way that we could do this perhaps is to invite, are you on the education committee, Kathy?
Yes.
So maybe we could invite you. Or you could come in.
I think you are.
I haven't met this guy, I can't remember.
Yeah, maybe we could, maybe if we could get like six, seven, eight members of the education committee, we'd be happy to give you a tour, Mike. And if you could, if you could invite them, shoot me a message and I'll give you a few nights. Well, we could do it whenever, but usually we do it in the evening. But the building is, is, even, even a couple of days later, Kathy, I went, and it's amazing the progress they make, just like in a couple of days. So it would be, it would be really fun to go there, Mike. And do you have a child there, Mike?
Yes.
Well, yes, yeah.
Yeah, good, okay. So, so anyway, invite the committee and shoot me a note.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Did you have a comment?
Mike, Dr. Grineer, sorry.
No, no, I was, Kathy anticipated what I was going to say, we would like to invite you.
If there are no other questions or comments, I'm going to continue to live up to holding a Harry Watson meeting and have it done in an hour.
Yay.
I, I'd like to note, for Harry's purposes, it was less than an hour.
Yes.
All right, all right.
Despair.
All right, so all those...
Mark Russell, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Mark, Mark, all right, all right, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
In September.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
See you, Mark.
Bye, Sam, thanks for coming.